Before we go back on the record, I just want to make sure that, check in with City Attorney Innes. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We have no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. We will be in recess for just a moment then. Thank you. Alright, everybody ready? Great, I will call our regular City Council meeting back to order. The time right now is four minutes after seven. I'd like to ask Reverend Jim Seiler from the Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church to come forward and lead us in the invocation for this evening, and after that, we have the pleasure of introducing you to Girl Scout Brownie Troop 5477, who will then come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all would please write.
Please join in the meaning prayer. Gracious God, we come to you with thankful hearts for the beauty of this place that you allow us to call home, and for the inspired work of our city leaders and employees that have resulted in our wonderful city. We also come today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We meet to serve our citizens, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and the community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings upon our deliberations and on our efforts here today. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, and your wisdom as we deliberate this evening. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals this day. Amen.
Audience attention. Color Guard advance. Color Guard, present the colors. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience please write in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience may be seated.
That's great. If you all would stay put where you are, we'll come down and say hello. After you. I gotta say, that's a whole lot of flag for them to carry, so good job, right? Thank you. You get a great job. Thanks for coming. And they're spending some of their summer vacation at City Hall, which is not an easy thing to do. So, thank you so much for being here. I wanted to let everybody say hi to you. Can you tell us your name and what school you go to, and what grade you're gonna be in? And when you start school? Is it like two weeks from now? Thank goodness, it's three weeks away. So, I didn't mean to make it shorter, so, hi.
Hi, my name is Cora, and I go to St. Edwards, and I'm going in the third grade.
My name is Hayden Metus, and I'm going, I go to St. Edwards, the Confessor, and I'm going in the third grade.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I'm going into first grade, and I go to Community Roots.
Y'all did such a good job, and everybody gets fun outfits and hats and stuff. We gotta get some of these for council, I think, yeah, right? Wouldn't that be nice? Do we have any troop leaders here with us tonight? Love to have you all come up, say thank you. They do such a wonderful job preparing our future leaders, and on behalf of our grateful city, let me say thank you by giving you one of our community coins. It's just a memembrance and an appreciation for you all being here. Would you all mind if I take your picture? Can we get a picture? Okay, cool. Let me come around back. Now, who's gonna do the releasing? You get to give the speech part two? Do you know what you're gonna say? Okay, you want the microphone? Okay.
Color Guard dismissed.
Nailed it. Good job. Thank you so much, girls, and thank you so much for your service here. We have one presentation tonight, and if I could enlist the help of one of my colleagues, anybody who happens to be nearby. This is a proclamation. Let me get to the right part. This is a proclamation for Constitution Week, which is going to be on September 17th through the 23rd. The Constitution is obviously our founding document. It's everything that we base our principles off of, and we in Laguna Niguel think it's extraordinarily important to take a moment, as we do every year, to recognize Constitution Week. So, I present this proclamation to you, Councilman Reins, for, so, thank you for holding it. But this proclamation will be here in City Hall, and just wanted to let everybody know that we will be celebrating that this week. So, look for that on your social media as well. So, with that, we are done, and we can return to the dais for our next presentation. Our next and last presentation is by Southern California Edison on the 2019 Wildfire Mitigation Plan. And this time, I'd like to ask Carol Lee Darnell, Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Edison. I was gonna say to come forward, but there you are. So, hi, welcome.
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I am here to discuss with you Southern California Edison's wildfire mitigation plan, and what we're doing over the coming months to prepare for the next wildfire season and prepare our infrastructure. So, I'll go ahead and move forward. I will, I wanna be respectful of your time this evening, so I'll go through these slides rather quickly. If you have any questions, I'm obviously here as a resource to you. We like to start out by talking about community resiliency and preparedness. Wildfire, obviously, is not the only tragedy that can strike all of our communities. We've seen recently with earthquakes and things like that, so we just like to remind the public that everybody should be prepared to be self-sustaining for at least seventy-two hours without, you know, if you don't need the immediate help of first responders. So, here this evening, we're here to talk about, or I'm here to talk about, Southern California's wildfire risk, and then what Edison is doing in response to that. So, it's estimated that about ten million acres of land contain ready-to-burn kindling across the state of California. We also have significant populations of dead and dying trees. And as you can see from the chart, the most, ten of the most destructive wildfires in California history have occurred since 2015. We definitely view ourselves as a partner in addressing this issue that does affect the entire state. So, SCE has a wildfire mitigation plan that we have prepared and filed with the state of California. And I'm gonna go into a couple of different aspects of this plan throughout the next couple of slides. But our basic goal is to reduce the opportunity for ignition from utility infrastructure. We're gonna be further hardening our system, we're gonna be bolstering our situational awareness, and we're going to be enhancing our operational practices in order to do so. So, I'll go through a couple of slides that talks about everything that we're doing with regard to these efforts. Earlier this year, the governor put together a strike force to look at the wildfire issue in the state of California. The, this group came back with several recommendations about the April timeframe. And the Assembly, or I'm sorry, the entire state legislature actually took action on this in the last couple of weeks, resulting in AB 1054, which is the state's, you know, response essentially to the wildfire problem. They've been looking at establishing a statewide wildfire fund, making communities more resilient, and we were very happy that this legislation was passed before they left for August recess. So, this is a map of the city of Laguna Niguel. So, it's estimated that about a third of Southern California Edison's territory is in the high-fire severity zone, as according to CAL FIRE maps and things like that, that map out the state in terms of the high fire. This map here is specific to your city, so you can see the areas that are impacted. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about these areas and the potential impacts that you might see. But this is really where we're focused when it comes to our work in Laguna Niguel, to making sure that the community is safe, especially headed into this next fire season. And our fire maps come from a combination of CPUC-adopted fire maps, and then also the CAL FIRE maps, just in case you were wondering. So, what are we trying to do? Well, this is what we call the fire triangle. And what we're trying to do is eliminate sides of the triangle, so that we don't have ignition sources. We're particularly focused on the heat side, reducing the risk from electrical infrastructure in case our equipment were to come into contact with dry brush. We're also doing significant vegetation management, which I'll talk about in a later slide. And then also really increasing our awareness of what's going on in terms of the weather, and using that to enhance our operational practices. So, this is the overall SCE wildfire mitigation plan. It's basically broken up into two major categories. We have our operational practices, and then also our infrastructure improvements. And I'm gonna go through each one of these in a subsequent slide, so I'm not gonna sit here and read these to you. The first is, in terms of infrastructure, is our system hardening elements. We are going out into the high-fire severity zones and replacing bare wire with covered conductor, which is essentially an electrical wire that has, if you will, a heavy plastic jacket over the top of it. So, that can help prevent ignitions if, you know, palm trees, et cetera, were to come into contact with the lines. We're also installing what we call smarter fusers, fuses, and reclosers, if you will, which basically make the system more responsive in high-fire, or in high-fire areas. They're not going to automatically restart. The way that a lot of our equipment works, especially overhead equipment, is if there's a fault on the line, it doesn't necessarily take the entire circuit down, because that could be from a number of things, a squirrel or things like that. And so, in order to keep the power on, you know, we automatically re-energize to make, to see if it's cleared and to keep the power on. But in the high-fire severity zones, we're really taking a stronger look at that, and saying, okay, maybe that's not the best practice, and installing technology like this that will help us be more responsive. On the left, you also have a, or yeah, it should be your left, too. You have a composite pole, and so where appropriate, we are changing out wood poles for composite poles that have a much higher burn threshold. This is our, this slide, we talk about our enhanced overhead inspection. So, Southern California Edison and all investor-owned utilities are required to investigate, or to inspect our equipment on an annual, or on an annual interview, essentially. So, we're going out, we're looking at poles, we're looking at wires, seeing how everything is looking. However, this year, we said, okay, this is a new, you know, this year-round wildfire season is a new normal. We need to go out, and we need to make sure that everything in the high-fire severity zone is ready to go into the next fire season, regardless of what our service interval says. So, we went out and we conducted inspections of every piece of equipment in the high-fire severity zones. That was done with a combination of actual boots on the ground, linemen and troublemen going out and investigating. Also, we utilized our helicopter fleet in some of the areas with rougher terrain, as well as drone technology to give us an idea of what improvements might need to happen. Since those inspections have taken place, we're working through all of the operational issues that were identified and replacing equipment accordingly. Undergrounding, this is obviously an option that we explore in certain areas where it's geographically feasible and makes sense to do so. As I'm sure you're all aware, Laguna Niguel's a largely underground city to begin with. So, most of the infrastructure that we're gonna be talking about here is up in the hill areas. And so, this isn't necessarily, it's an option that we look at, but this isn't necessarily something that we would utilize in those areas. We are bolstering our situational awareness capabilities, and we're doing that through a variety of resources, including weather stations, weather stations, weather modeling, and then also our fire cameras. This is all feeding into our Situational Awareness Center at our Emergency Operations Center in Irwindale, California, which is staffed twenty-four hours a day to look at what's going on throughout our service territory and make those operational decisions about what we're doing on our system. This is just a shot of some of our HD, of one of our HD fire cameras. This is up in San Diego Peak, and that is actually the Holy Jim Fire. All of our cameras are shared with our first responders and our fire watch. So, this was actually the camera that caught the Holy Jim Fire when it first ignited. I think that was last, yeah, late last year. This is also a map of all of our fire cameras throughout the service territory. These are all publicly available, and we do share this information with, again, with all of our first responders and our fire watch partners. And anybody else that was interested can go on and look at those cameras. This is a map of all of our weather stations throughout the service territory, and those are all, again, publicly available, and we share those with any entity that might be interested in the data from those. So, our vegetation management program, we are going out and being fairly aggressive in our tree clearance and making sure that we do have our twelve-feet clearances for distribution poles, especially in the high-fire areas, to make sure that we don't have any trees that could be a problem, that could be falling into our lines, and doing what we can where we're allowed in terms of eliminating dead and dying trees and doing those sorts, that sort of work. And finally, what everybody probably has heard about is our public safety power shut-off. This is the program that all the investor-owned utilities have for proactively de-energizing circuits when certain conditions are met. This is not something that we take lightly, and I would like to just let you know, there's only one circuit in Laguna Niguel that's identified as a potential public safety power shut-off circuit, and that's the Timpani. And you should have a circuit map in your packet to be able to identify where that circuit is in the city. So, that's really the only circuit we're talking about here. But this is where, if the right conditions materialize in terms of wind, fuel load on the ground, et cetera, that we could potentially de-energize that circuit to prevent a cause of ignition. So, the different decision points that go into making a PSPS decision include that situational awareness, including the weather data that we're getting from our weather stations and other areas, actual crews on the ground investigating what, you know, what's the fuel load, what are the weather conditions? Are things actually flying around that we should be concerned about? And then also coordinating with our first responders and our community partners to make sure that they're not inhibited in their abilities and that essential services are, you know, kept up and running whenever possible. This is an ideal timeline in a PSPS situation, just so you can understand, you can know what the community could expect. So, we're looking at weather modeling about seven days ahead, and seven to four days ahead, we're saying, okay, do we think that there's going to be a wind event, and, you know, should we potentially be responding to this? At the three-day mark, that's where we will stand up an incident management team that will report to our Emergency Operations Center and start working the wind event, and seeing, okay, is this something that we think could actually happen? At the forty-eight-hour mark, so forty-eight hours out from when we expect the conditions to materialize, that's when we're gonna be notifying our local government partners first, public safety. And then after those notifications have been made, we will notify customers. So, every customer that is on a circuit that could have this happen, they have received a letter from us, they have received other communications letting them know, please update your contact information. We need to be able to communicate with you to give those real-time updates. Because obviously, if all we have is your mailing address, that's not gonna do you much good with forty-eight hours notice. Then we will communicate again, one day out, saying, yes, either this is still a possibility, or no, it's not. And then again, a notification once, if and when the wind does actually materialize, and if we do have to take down power. We will let you know if that circuit falls off the list and it's no longer being considered, and then we will also let you know once power is fully restored. We do like to go back to that first slide of, you know, the preparation in an emergency. During these wind events, we are not able to, as I explained earlier, once the wind dies down, we can't just flip the switch and turn the power back on. Because if something did fly into the lines and it's de-energized, and then we turn it back on, we could be causing exactly what we were looking to prevent. So, all of our lines have to be manually inspected once the event has passed. So, there's gonna be a little bit of time there to make sure that our crews can get out there and ensure that it's safe to restore power. This is, this is an event that we will do, this is very much a last resort. We are not looking to do this frequently. I can tell you that last year, I think we had two incidences in the state of California. Yeah, in 2019, we've done it twice, sorry. In 2018, we've done it four times. And that's across the entirety of our service territory. So, it's more, it's more likely that you will receive notifications that this is something we are considering. We like to over-notify, let people know that it's a possibility. But we do not anticipate this being a very frequent occurrence, particularly in Laguna Niguel. So, community resiliency, we always want to remind people to be prepared, to plan ahead, and have a plan in case this were to become a real situation that we had to, that we had to respond to. I've also brought with me several handouts for the community. They're all back on the table. So, I'm leaving those at City Hall for you to put out for individuals that might have any questions. And with that, I will leave you with all of my useful links. So, do you have any questions?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions at the outset? Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Since we actually have both Edison, as well as San Diego Gas and Electric, how do you guys coordinate that? Cities kind of, I know, over here, I believe, is this Edison over here? Is this right, kind of, in this section, but on the other side?
I think it's Crown Valley, yeah. Yeah, so, Duane would be, Duane Cave from SDG&E would be able to better comment. I would imagine that their protocol is very similar to ours in these events. SDG&E has utilized this PSPS in some events that I've seen, but down more in San Diego County. So, I would imagine that they would operate very much in the same way, but I couldn't speak to their...
I wasn't sure if you guys actually coordinate together if something happens, where, just because we're all in the same city, and we've got two different...
No, because any interruptions on our circuit would really have nothing to do with theirs. But if we do, if we do activate these types of events, we all have to coordinate through CAL OES and let them know that that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
And we also, so, the other thing is, we've spent extensive time up at the County Emergency Operations Center at Loma Ridge, and we always coordinate with them on events like this.
And also, did the state give you funding to help pay for all of these modifications?
So, we have requests, so, our, all of our spending is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. So, we have submitted a request for reimbursement for all of the work that we're doing right now. But we did not wait for that authorization, because we felt that the impending fire season was more important. So, all the work that we're doing now is pending an adjustment through the PUC.
I think that's a great decision. Safety first. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions?
I have some additional questions, but thank you, Mayor Protem. Those were what I was gonna ask. And thank you for your presentation. A lot of good information, and I know it's important for the public to see what's being done to be on a preventative front. Question, though, when you remove the trees, do you have a program in place to then replant trees in that area?
So, every tree removal is really kind of handled on a, on a case-by-case basis. We employ a very large staff of arborists, and they'll go out and work with the residents and let them know, you know, hey, this tree, we believe that this tree has to go. And we will replace in instances where it's appropriate, but we may be looking at possibly a different species that's not going to present the same problems in however many years. But yes, we absolutely work with the homeowners and, and try to make, you know, make it as best, do as best we can to make them happy.
Okay.
And if you ever receive any inquiries about tree trimming, please feel free to funnel those through me. We have a very good relationship with the district and that's where those crews are managed out of.
Thank you.
All right, Carol Lee, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you, have a wonderful evening.
Thanks for bringing your helpers with you.
We're going to dinner.
Good. All right, that concludes our presentations tonight and brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and fill out one of these gold-colored request to speak forms, which are available from the city clerk or on the back, on the back counter near the door. The time limit for each speaker will be three minutes. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker, however, if you run out of time, you may have another person read a written statement for you if you have one. I've received a few requests to speak for them, City Clerk Gomez, are there any others?
That's Sullivan.
Okay, good, thank you. Our first speaker tonight will be Peggy Schwartz. All right.
Hello.
Hi, so our real first public speaker is Janice Scheretz.
Janice Scheretz. My name is Janice Scheretz, I live at 29216 Pompano Way, Laguna Niguel, and I'm on the board of the Friends of Laguna Niguel Library. And I am here tonight because I am greatly concerned with the proposed plan for the rebuilt library, as has been shown on the developer's map. I have four concerns. Library needs to be at least 15,000 to 20,000 square feet. The library needs to be adjacent to the parking structure. The library needs its own library program room connected to the library, not shared. And the library needs adequate space for the Friends bookstore, workroom, and storage. Now, hopefully, the plans at present are not already decided and approved. And so these are the reasons for the four points and needs for your consideration. The current proposal calls for only 10,000 square feet and that was stated by one of the developers. And do you know that's a reduction of a third of our current space at the library? That doesn't allow space for all the popular and attended events and programs, the Friends work, the children and adult programs. And it doesn't take into account the fast growth that will be shown on the regular librarian's reports. Second, close by parking is essential for the handicap toddlers, strollers, and senior patrons. Of course, the goal is to check out lots of books, so convenient parking is surely needed. The library program room is currently used almost full-time and you can see this by a copy of the September schedule, which is a typical month and those copies are available. And thus, you would see, it would be impossible to share that with a general community room that rents out events. Lastly, the Friends of the Library currently and consistently fund popular and specific needed supplies and programs and materials for children and also for the library, equipment and furniture. Contributing funds from the Friends comes from the amount of books that are sold and obviously, they need the space to do that. And would you believe that it, at this point, is a total of, in excess of $300,000 that the Friends of the Library has contributed? As far as the lib-
You have 10 seconds.
As far as the library size goes, it is simply a misnomer that our residents are reading fewer paper books that they actually hold. In fact, our patrons, young and old, are checking out more and more books. It is a wrong assumption that a lesser library space could adequately meet the recreational and research reading needs in Laguna Niguel. In conclusion, hopefully and surely, the deciding powers that be, whomever they are, can readily see that these four points need to be addressed. Bigger size, parking, inclusive library program room, and space for the Friends of the Library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Peggy Schwartz. Thanks, Peggy. And in all fairness to you, it does say right here before Peggy on Jan, so good job. I found it.
The best laid plans, yes.
It was a great plan, good job.
I'm Peggy Schwartz, I'm president of the Friends and I live at 28771 Drake's Bay. While I'm still disappointed that the proposed plan calls for tearing down the current library and moving it, and I worry about our transition period, I feel we need to focus on the proposed plan to be sure that we have a library that will serve the community needs and that we can all be proud of. I thank Jan for laying out the four areas of concern. I'd like to address the proposed location of the new library back in the corner near the apartments. This year, the library has been averaging 15,000 visitors a month. The daily total has run anywhere from 300 to as high as 1,000 people in a single day. Wouldn't any retail shop or restaurant be thrilled to have that foot traffic? When we had our storefront for two years during the remodel, the Friends won an estate award for raising foot traffic to the neighboring merchants by 30%. Since we are part of the attraction, let's move our location to increase the library's visibility and its accessibility. Our current location has 83 parking spots and on program days, the overflow ends up in the City Hall parking lot. We draw patrons from neighboring cities because of our wonderful programming and the easy in and out of our parking. So put us near the parking garage and we'll keep it jumping. For years, we've called our large room the community room, which is really an error. It's fully scheduled by the library and its real name is the library program room. The month of September has 60 hours of programming and that doesn't include time for setup and teardown. The library staff is continuously adding new programs to the schedule. We need exclusive control of the scheduling in order to be flexible. It needs to be within the library because people who come to the programs, especially families, use the visit to return and check out books and other materials. Our library is currently one of three larger libraries in South Orange County. Our budget is based on, a large part, on our visitors, our circulation of materials, and the attendance at programs. We are open 60 hours a week, including Sundays. If our attendance and circulation numbers go down, we risk a decrease in our budget and a reduction in our staffing and in our open hours. Our square footage affects the number of books that we can hold and other materials and the location and parking will affect the number of our visitors. The absence of a library program room within the library proper will threaten either the attendance at the programs or the circulation of our books. My point, the library is a contributing partner in the success of this new town center. The new library needs to be visible and accessible and large enough to meet our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Our next speaker is Irene Bowie. Irene, welcome to City Hall.
Thank you, good evening.
If you would please state your name and address.
My name is Irene Bowie and I live at 22832 Monteago Road in Laguna Niguel.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. I attended the City Center project presentation on July 23rd along with many other community members and I came away with two thoughts. First, I was disappointed that both the developers and the mayor allowed for no questions from the public during the presentation. A project can only be improved by public input. Concerns from the community should be listened to and taken into consideration as the project evolves into something that meets the needs of the community. Secondly, the developers stated at the beginning of the presentation that the project needs to be approved as presented or they will, quote, "walk away." I'm curious as to how the EIR will present the required alternatives when it has already been made clear that the developers are not interested in adjusting this project in any way. Those of us who regularly use Pacific Island Drive are especially concerned that more traffic to and from the project will increase speeding along that roadway. With the emphasis the developers put on restaurants and live music within the project, will we also see more DUIs impacting our residential areas? And how will this mix work with the community library? I hope that the city will ask for a robust traffic study to be part of the project, CIR. Mitigation should be in place for air quality impacts during construction and the loss of biological resources within the parcel. I would hope that the upcoming scoping meeting will not be a repeat of the July 23rd presentation, but instead give the community the opportunity to ask questions and present their concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes, unless there's any other notes? Okay, no, that concludes our public communications. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our consent calendar, items one through eight, and I'll ask my colleagues to see if there are any items that need to be pulled. Anyone? Anyone down here? No?
I want to recuse from item number one, but I wanted to discuss item number eight.
Okay, so we got a recusal on item number one and...
Discussions on item eight.
Item number eight, okay. Is there a motion for the balancing?
No, I need to recuse myself on the warrant register, which is item one. Let's see. Payment number 4344 to Dell Marketing. That's on page six.
Okay, so those two recusals are noted by the city clerk?
I second the motion.
Okay, so it's moved by Mayor Protem Davies, seconded by Councilor Menegar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. So items one through nine, save for number eight, have been approved and item number eight is, turn over to it, designated the voting delegate for the 2019 League of California Cities. Nope, that's fine.
No, it's the ADA.
It's the ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan Update. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a couple of questions. The first one is, why we didn't issue any requests for proposals so, so we would have a pool of qualified ADA consultants to join and/or to compete with the CJ, PIA, and DAC consulting firm?
Well, CGPIA is our insurance authority-
Right.
And they have a program that offers grants to their member agencies who want to participate by updating their self-evaluation and transition plans. And CJPIA had an RFP process where they went out and had a number of firms bid on all the different member agencies that might want to participate in the program. So we are actually using the consultant that has already been through a competitive process with CJPIA. And this is actually a continuation of work that this company has already done for us earlier this year.
Okay, as a, as a part of the federal requirement, as you know, this is under Title II of the U.S. Congress Act. How come we don't have any designated CASP individual in the city to monitor, i.e., to coordinate the program?
The disability access consultants, they have CASP and that's the Certified Access Certification that people receive. They have those individuals on their staff and they're actually doing the inspections for us and they give us the results. So we have here in the city, as a city, we're not required to have CASP individuals on staff. We're required to have a designated ADA 504 coordinator. Right at the moment, it's me, but it will be soon to be Russell Narahara, a management analyst in the Public Works Department, and also Aaron Spradlin, management analyst in the Administration Department.
On that note, I had long discussions with our interim city manager, Bob Hall, and I mentioned that I want to make sure that either Russell or the other gentleman would go to Sacramento to obtain the certification. It's very important, it's a, it's a part of the transitioning process by the U.S. government. I've seen other cities getting sued, I didn't want to use the word, and we want to make sure that this beautiful gray city does not fall into that kind of potential trap that we have to use taxpayers' money to get us out of that kind of potential litigation situation. So it is extremely important that the designated individual for this transitioning process would be a certified, you know, would be a CASP certified by the state of California. Because that individual, as you know, under the DAC computer software, has to update it and it has to be posted publicly on our website. So any disabled individual in this city and all other cities that would be either commuting, traveling, residing, visiting, doing anything, can have access to that list with a proper action plan and only that CASP specialist can do that. I've seen other cities in California, they've gone through that and, and I wanted to make sure that this city is safe and sound with regard to the legality aspect of it, because it's a big deal, Title II and then Title III to some extent, but, but Title II is the one that I'm concerned the most. Title III is for the public, I mean, for the private entities such as, you know, restaurants that have to comply and conform with the U.S. Congress Act of 1992. So because of the case law in the city of San Francisco, we want to make sure that everything at this juncture, since we are making a motion on this item to be approved by this body, that we take care of those so that there would be no potential loopholes, that the city is safe and secure. So everything is going to be uploaded by DAC consultant at every juncture, once they do any kind of public roadway, which would be all the curb and gutter system, as you know, all the sidewalks and what have you, that we cannot have any missing segments because it's going to be a potential gap, you know, deficiency on the systems. And I thought it was like, how many miles do we have? I forgot the number.
They're going to be inspecting 165 linear miles.
Okay, so, and it's a big, big task and I know that the Public Works Department cannot take care of it because we need outside consultants to do it, people that are more efficient and, you know, and faster, because our Public Works Department is busy with a lot of other good projects that we want to do. Very good, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, are you, are you attempting to modify the motion?
No, no, I'm not attempting to modify the motion, except I just wanted to make sure that we take care of those loopholes, you know, which is CASP certified individual to be present at the city and since we're going to have designated individuals, I wanted to make sure that they are, one of them or both of them would be certified.
Well, the CJPIA is the insurance authority that would defend us in any kind of a lawsuit that might arise and so they are fully aware of what they're, what we are doing and what we're attempting to do and, and giving us the guidance and direction that we need. And so we will most certainly be keeping ourselves in the best possible position that we can.
Okay, very good. No, we don't need to modify.
Okay, are you making a motion?
Yes, I make the motion to move it.
Okay, okay, so it's moved by Councilman Menegar, seconded by Councilwoman Marains, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Genaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the item passes unanimously. Our next item is Community Development, item number one, and that is for a special assessment for weed abatement unpaid charges. This recalls for a public hearing for the special assessment. The Community Development Director, Orduña, is here to provide us with the staff report. John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Senior Planner Eric List will be providing the presentation on this item.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council members. On June 18th, 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution 20191292 directing city staff to commence with weed abatement on properties that had been previously declared a public nuisance and to report back to City Council the related cost. The city has performed the weed abatement on four properties, which have been invoiced for the work performed. There is an update to Exhibit 1 of this resolution. Shattling HOA has submitted full payment. The final resolution will be updated to remove that parcel from the list. To date, the city has not received payment for the remaining three properties totaling $4,410. It is recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20191297, providing for the cost of work performed for each respective parcel to be assessed to that parcel's property tax bill as amended to remove Parcel 65366144. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. List. Unless there are questions, I want to go to, do you have a question initially? Okay. Want to go to the public hearing and see if there are any requests to speak for?
No, Mayor, there are none at this time.
Great, thank you. So I will open the public hearing, note that we had no requests to speak for him, and close the public hearing, and then ask and see if the council had any comments for discussion or anything else regarding the weed abatement program. Hearing none, I'm sorry, is there?
I just want to verify that the, the people that they did the mitigation for had been notified several times prior to this action being taken, just to be...
Yes, the property owner- Yes, the property owners were mailed a letter, and we attempted to contact them by phone as well.
Okay, so thank you.
So the call is whether or not we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1297, confirming the report of charges to be placed as a special assessment on specific properties for weed abatement as amended for 2019. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Moved by Councilwoman Menega.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rains. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Our next discussion item is Public Works, item number one, a public hearing regarding the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigated monitoring and reporting program plan and making findings in connection therewith in approving the city's wetlands operations and maintenance plan. In this instance, we have our Public Works Director Scott, who's going to provide us with the staff report.
Before you start, I wanted to recuse myself from this item due to any potential perceived conflict of interest, so I'll be back after the discussion on this item.
All right, City Attorney Innis, do we need any further clarification on that conflict?
He and I have spoken about it, and I concur with his decision.
Okay, so we're good for the record?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you.
And it's related to a source of income.
Okay, very good, thank you. So noted. Director Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Jennings. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring reporting plan that will allow this city to apply and obtain expanded permits for needed maintenance within the city's wetlands areas. These permits are under the jurisdiction of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and Regional Water Quality Control Board. Also, for City Council's consideration is approval of the wetlands operation and maintenance plan that will implement the maintenance methodologies covered by these permits. The work on this document has been in progress by the city's environmental consultant, ICF Jones &amp; Stokes, since July of 2018. Adoption of this resolution and associated maintenance plans will allow the city to better control erosion, remove trash and debris, and trim and maintain the vegetation within the city's wetlands areas. Currently, the city has been very limited in the tools and types of maintenance we've been allowed to perform within these areas. The environmental commitments contained in the mitigated negative declaration obligates the city to a program of notification, scheduling and monitoring, and annual reporting to the various oversight agencies with the results of these maintenance activities. In addition to the expanded permits, the resource agencies are also requiring the city to record a restrictive covenant over the city's wetland sites to maintain the sites as natural open space into perpetuity. Joining us this evening is the environmental consultant from ICF, Lanica Cervantes and Chad Beckstrom. They're available to answer any detailed or technical questions you may have. It is recommended that the City Council hold a public hearing on the Wetlands Operations and Maintenance Project and the initial study mitigated negative declaration document for Wetlands Operations and Maintenance Project, and adopt Resolution 2019-1293, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the City of Laguna Niguel Wetlands Operations and Maintenance Plan, and make findings in connection therewith in approving the city's Wetlands Operations and Maintenance Plan. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Director Scott? I don't know if it's a question or not, but it's more like a comment. This is one of the third or fourth time I've had an opportunity to have this before me. It is one of the more frustrating things that the city has to do. This is the best form of an unfunded mandate I've ever come across, and what used to be basically just low-lying ditches in town have now become wetlands in the United States and requires us to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to take care of them. It is an inordinately frustrating thing. I'm a very environmentally conscious person, but from a city council that, you know, takes care of our money, year over year, we have the same frustration that we wring our hands a little bit about having to deal with the wetlands of the United States on things which I think should be well within our city's grasp without having to do so. And I got to commend the environmental consultants, this is an impressive piece of work product. So you did a good job on a frustrating thing, but having said that, I do appreciate it. And at least the good news on the back end of this is now we can start doing some of the things we want to do with these properties rather than being hindered by an act which I think unnecessarily limits our ability to local control of our own property. So having ranted now, if that's my version of a rant, I ask and see if there, and there wasn't a question at the end of that, it was just rant, so, see if there are any comments or questions from the council, Councilwoman Genaway?
No questions, very extensive and comprehensive report. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You just said what I was going to say.
Okay. We'll say it again, we're all in favor.
But I do want, is there, does the government give any type of grant or funding to compensate for these costs?
There are some environmental grants for expanding additional wetlands, which we don't try to...
No, we don't.
...accomplish. Unfortunately, I haven't run across a funding source for the ongoing maintenance ones we have them.
Not surprised. Thank you, appreciate it.
Just my, just for my clarification, and maybe some of our residents might, what constitutes something being a wetland? How do they determine what they identify as a wetland?
I appreciate that question, and I'm sure, I'm sure there's a very correct answer to that, and I'm going to ask my consultants to come weigh in on the technical, yeah, no, thank you, if they could come up to the podium and please respond to the question, I greatly appreciate that.
I'm Lanica Cervantes. So both the state and the federal government have their specific definition of what a wetland is, so it typically needs to have three parameters, so you have to have wetland plants, so it depends on, you know, because of this is lush with willows and it meets that, it has to have enough hydrology, so evidence that water sits or stands there for about two weeks at a time when it's during the wet season, and it has to be hydroic soils. So usually we dig a pit, we'll characterize the soils, and you'll have different redox iron in the soils if it's a wetland versus an upland. So we base, the initial study was, you know, going out and surveying and really fine-tuning where their jurisdiction was, and then kind of working with the city in terms of what they needed to do so that we can accomplish all of your activities.
Yeah, my initial hope was to compare the cost for doing this year over year to digging a very large hole and putting a piece of pipe under it and taking care of this once and for all, but, you know, short of doing that, here we are. So unless there are any other comments, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-1293, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring reporting program for the City of Laguna Niguel Wetlands Operation and Maintenance Plan, the making and findings and connections therewith in approving the city's Wetlands Operation and Maintenance Plan?
Make a motion.
So moved.
Okay, got beat out, got motioned by...
I didn't hear that, sorry.
Got motioned by Councilwoman Rains, seconded by Councilwoman Genaway. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous four to one with Councilwoman Menega abstaining.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, but you need to open and then close the public hearing?
I thought I did that, so I'm sorry. If I did not, I will now.
Okay.
Is there a, is, do we have any requests to speak for? Okay, good, thank you. Then I will open it to note that there are no requests to speak for, then close it. I will reassert the motion by Councilwoman Rains, the second by Councilwoman Genaway. All in favor say aye? Aye, any opposed? And again, it is four, four one with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Menega abstaining. Did I fix it? Like the largest number of public hearings in one meeting we've had in a while. Welcome back. You were missed. Our last discussion item is Finance, item number one, regarding selection of a firm to provide independent auditing services to the city. And for this, we turn to Director Erlinson to provide a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
In compliance with Laguna Niguel Municipal Code Section 368E, staff requested proposals for professional auditing services. The city received ten proposals, of which the top four firms were invited to interview with the city's Investment Banking and Audit Committee. It was the consensus of the Investment Banking and Audit Committee that the independent accounting firm of Davis Farr, LLP, was best qualified to perform the audit of the city. The committee was particularly impressed with the firm's presentation and answers to the committee's questions during the interview. In addition to this firm's qualifications and experience, Davis Farr is completely independent and has had no prior affiliation with the city or city management. The committee unanimously recommends that the City Council retain the services of Davis Farr, LLP, to provide the scope of work outlined in their proposal to provide professional auditing services to the city. The cost of the base contract audit services will be $34,190 for fiscal year 2018-19, $35,216 for fiscal year 2021, I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, 1920, $36,273 for fiscal year 2021, for a total cost over the three-year period of approximately $106,000. The cost for optional services will vary depending upon which services are requested each year, with a range from approximately $7,200 to $8,100 added to the annual base contract amount. The fiscal year 1920 finance department operating budget contains sufficient appropriations to cover the cost of the independent audit. It is recommended that the City Council select Davis Farr, LLP, to perform the independent audit of the City of Laguna Niguel for fiscal years 2018-19, 2019-20, and 2020-21, with an option to perform the audit for two additional years. B, approve the agreement for professional auditing services with Davis Farr, LLP, subject to the city attorney making non-substantive changes, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem as representatives of the City Council to select two additional optional procedures to be performed each year and communicating that directly to the auditors. Jennifer Farr, partner with the firm Davis Farr, is in attendance this evening to answer any questions the City Council may have. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I can recognize Mayor Pro Tem Davies.
Yeah, I sit on the IBNA as well as the mayor here, and I can tell you, obviously, this is a very important decision, so much so that we actually had two rounds, because we really wanted to make sure we had the right firm, and we're very pleased with them. They have a lot of other cities nearby in the area that they've been dealing with. The reputation is stellar, and I think it's a great decision. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll echo that as also as a member of that committee, I was very concerned that we get this right. We had had one firm for a while, and we brought them back through the RFP process. They interviewed and competitively bid along with everyone else. I think for the experience and the money, we are getting a very, very good deal on this contract, and I'm very excited to have them on board and look forward to working with them. So they, they obviously have my support. Councilwoman Menega?
Mr. Mayor, I'm very pleased with the decision of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and also the Investment Banking and Audit Committee. This is, this is one of the most critical things that the city needed to upgrade its consulting team, and I looked at all their, you know, pricing, their pricing is extremely reasonable, and I heard that they've been doing similar services for other cities. I don't forget, back in 2017, when I was the mayor, we were going through a lot of issues, and this, the issue of audit was another one that was, was very sensitive to me, and I'm happy that we're starting this year with, by looking at, you know, all the, you know, all the numbers from a completely different perspective. And we made the same decision at TCA that after, God knows, after fifteen years, we replaced the auditing firm that has been doing the same auditing for so many years because we, and it was one of the number one auditing firm in the U.S., and I said it's about time to have a fresh look, to look at all the numbers, to make sure that, you know, our city stands by its values. This is the thirtieth anniversary, you know, we want to be very proud of what we do and who we are. So, great decision, thank you.
Well said, and I completely agree. Councilwoman Menega?
Well, this is so important to our city and the whole audit process, and I really appreciate the extra time that the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem took to do this and do this right and make sure we get a stellar company. And all the members of our Investment Banking and Audit Committee have such excellent professional reputations that if they say this is the firm to go with, I am very happy to go with their recommendation.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Rains?
I echo everything, just have a quick question. So now, when, if we were to approve this contract, then when would they actually do our audit for us, just for my clarification?
If the agreement is approved this evening, we will be working with the firm to schedule interim fieldwork. I would suspect that that fieldwork would probably happen, if I'm not misspeaking, Jennifer, very soon, probably middle to end of this month.
Just a note on that, we, in the effort to do a little bit more in the additional round of the RFP, put us back about two weeks, I think. We want to be able to do this so that we can get the CAFRA out on time and qualify for the, for the award application that we tend to win every year. So that's all in mind, and we got the commitment when Davis Farr interviewed, that they were ready to jump on it immediately and start working on it.
Thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Certainly something we wanted to happen as well, so...
Thank you, okay.
And we've been a little bit delayed, and it's time to get on it. So with that, as a member of that committee, I'd be happy to make that motion to approve Davis Farr. Is there a second? Okay, it's moved by the mayor, it's seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously, welcome to the city, thank you very much, and we look forward to your help. And that concludes our discussion items for tonight. We'll now move on to any other business and council reports. I will start to my right with Councilwoman Rains.
Thank you so much. I have a few things that I'd like to report on. As a member of the OCFA Board of Directors, we've been invited, so I want to open this up to the colleagues, they would like to have at least one council member from every city attend one of their OC Fire Ops. You can either participate, like, in the exercises, or just watch. Anyhow, that's August 31st or September 7th, so if any of you are interested, let me know, and I'm happy to give you more information. It's in Irvine at the Fire Authority, yeah. Also, with that, with also with the OCFA on September 21st, which will be coming up here around the corner, we're going to be installing, they're going to be installing some fire alarms in some of our homes along, it's Crown Valley and it's up in that Niguel Hills neighborhood, so there's a certain area that they've selected, and so the fire men will be going and doing that, so it'll be kind of fun, and I'll be participating in that, so if any of you want to join, let me know. And we just came from National Night Out, so we're blessed to have one of the safest cities in the country, not just in California, so thank you so much, Chief McDaniels and all of the others that were in attendance there, it seemed like it was a great event. I even got to put our mayor in jail for a few seconds, anyhow. He wasn't guilty, so he got right out.
Clearly, I'm more jet-lagged than I thought I was.
And the last thing I wanted to mention was, we have a wonderful Chamber of Commerce here in Laguna Niguel, and they host a governmental affairs once a month, and this last month we had Carolyn Kavachi with OC Tax, and she talked a lot about Proposition 13 and the importance of preserving it and why it's important. And a lot of times, we as residents don't understand that if, right now, on the ballot is going to be a split rule, which means they're going to be increasing the way that they tax businesses, retail and commercial. And a lot of times, as a homeowner or even as a renter, you might not think that affects you, but it does affect us, because every day we're doing businesses with each one of those places, and not wanting to preserve that and being aware of what that really means, it could increase rents, it could increase the cost of doing business with any of our local merchants. So she was really adamant about making sure that everyone is educated and understands that Proposition 13 benefits all of us in many ways, so it was a really good presentation, and I was glad to be able to participate, and that's it. So I'll have you tonight, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Menega?
Oh, thank you. Well, on behalf of SCAG, I wanted to distribute all these official cities' profile. These, these reports are published every two years. This is the bible with regard to population, households, housing, transportation, active transportation, employment, retail sales, and education. Every city in California would provide them to their call, council of governments, in this case, is the Southern California Association of Governments that has jurisdiction over 191 cities and 34... that has jurisdiction over one hundred and ninety-one cities, and thirty-four cities in Orange County is included there. I represent District Twelve, which is all the coastal cities, Laguna Beach, Dena Point, Aliso Viejo, Laguna Niguel, San Clemente, San Juan, Capistrano, and just the biggest takeaway from the last meeting that I attended at SCAG is that we voted on the methodologies, the three selected methodologies on RENA. RENA stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is so dear to all of us in this city council, this city, and a lot of cities in Southern California, because of, based upon the RENA numbers, every jurisdiction, i.e. every municipal corporation in Ca- in California, is obligated to comply, conform with the numbers that SCAG would be, basically, I don't want to use the word imposing upon us, but basically, that's going to be the law of the land. So it was a very, very sensitive discussion. Mayor Garcetti of LA, a lot of mayors were there discussing, it was like, not tug-of-war, but we agreed upon at this juncture, it's the best just to let the subcommittee that was chaired by Peggy Huang, City of Yorba Linda, uh, to present it to the SCAG board, to the regional council, which is all districts of Southern California, and we voted, it was almost, you know, near unanimous vote, that we said, okay, we allow SCAG to proceed with these, uh, three methodologies, which would be in reference to how people are going to have access to transportation and how they are going to be having access to jobs. We know that we are not going to be in the winning seed when it, when it comes down to RENA, because we are a typical suburban city. A lot of people live here, but then they go to work in LA or other job centers, you know, Fashion Island or Irvine. So having said that, uh, we are going to have a very special meeting. It is slated for August twenty-second, from one to three PM, at the City Hall of City of Irvine. It's the official meeting that SCAG's representative are going to be there. My biggest frustration that I echoed on the record, I said, you are, you guys are not getting sufficient local in- inputs, and we want to have local control, local inputs and local control, and also, we wanted to have public inputs there. I asked them, and I said, the data that you guys have created have archived statistically is insignificant. They didn't like what I said, but I come from South Orange County, I have to echo what residents of this great, you know, cities in South Orange County are, are feeling, and I said, we are going to be underrepresented when it comes down to, to the distribution of the numbers. Statistically, less than one percent, and I said that you guys have to do a better job when it comes down to the dissemination of information and, and conducting public, you know, public meetings. So having said that, it's going to be right after the old call meeting, Orange County Council of Governments, that I'll be there, uh, on, um, August twenty-second. It's going to be right after lunch, but lunch is going to be served, so if you can make it, please make it. Your inputs are very critical, as elected or as a private citizen, does not matter, because we are going to be on record to make sure that when it comes down to the allocation of RENA numbers, our city would not be penalized, unlike a lot of other cities that they are going to be benefiting from it, and that would translate into more funding, again, coming from Sacramento to those cities, and we are, uh, we happen to be a donor city, you know, all these years, we pay more and we're going to get less, and in result, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be pushed, we're going to be asked to provide a lot of, you know, unnecessary housing, um, you know, accommodations, when our numbers are very low, when it comes down to the number of homeless individuals. So, nothing is finalized, this is only a public, uh, public meeting. The catch is Sacramento is pushing SCAG and all other MPOs in the state of California. By October, they want to have all the numbers finalized, and I said this is a very short timeframe. It's not fair and it's not right to all these cities that, you know, we've been good, you know, corporate citizens, but at the end, you know, we're the ones that have to accept the numbers that they are going to be finalizing, because always it goes by what? Majority of those representatives that they're going to be voting on this, and we're going to be in minority, obviously, but, but at least, you know, we have moral duties to, to echo our frustration and to express our feelings that that's the way we want to see that. So, it's going to be a very important meeting, because right after that, it's, it's going to go back to SCAG meeting that I'll be attending the following month, and then they're going to ask the regional council members to, to vote on it. So, I don't know, we have to wait and see, we have to wait for the results of those three methodologies, how they're going to come up with their findings, and based on the results, then we can have, Mr. Mayor, we can have a formal, maybe a letter from you on behalf of the city, just to present it to SCAG.
No, I'd, I'd love that, and I appreciate your efforts, and I, I commend everything that you said. That, that's exactly the position that I would have taken, and I suspect you'd get a, a good read from our council on that as well, so I appreciate that. I'll say only that, um, that the RENA numbers affect almost everything that comes along, and our city likes to talk about development and apartments and things, and what they often don't know that they're talking about is that it's more out of this RENA discussion, and they don't know what RENA is.
A lot of people don't know.
So the, the idea that, that's right, the idea that the public, uh, hasn't had a chance or could have a much greater chance of being able to impact that decision is important, so I appreciate that. I'm going to ask our city staff to make sure that that gets reported, uh, so that, uh, that the public knows about it, that they have an opportunity to attend. It may be something of interest to them, so thank you very much for that. Let me move to, uh, Councilwoman Jeneway for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of the meetings that I went to since our last meeting was, um, had an ACCOC Legislative Committee meeting. Again, that's where we are making recommendations opposing or supporting legislation in Sacramento, and, um, because there's so many areas that legislation affects the quality of life here in Laguna Niguel. So, some of them that we were taking positions on were additional taxes, unfunded mandates, I mean, the list can go on and on, but your city council members who are, are looking at that and making our, uh, voice heard in Sacramento, I don't know what the mix in Sacramento now, how well it's heard, but we keep, uh, sending them the messages. I also attended, uh, former mayor Joe Brown's memorial service. He was a faithful and dedicated servant to the people of Laguna Niguel. So, um, many, many, um, former city employees were there, so God bless Joe Brown. One of the things that someone shared with me was, um, pork chops, and I don't know if you're of a former, an older or longer-term city employee, but he was adamant about, um, getting this public safety feature, this roadway safety feature in Laguna Niguel, and it's, and we have a lot of them, and I never knew what they were called, but it's when you're making a left turn onto roadway and you're in between the intersections, so it allows you to cross half the roadway, wait in this pocket that's created by the pork chop island, and then enter the traffic lane when it's safe. So when that, those were coming about and being, um, implemented in Laguna Niguel, um, Joe Brown was a strong advocate for it because of the public safety feature. So now when you drive down the streets and you see pork chops, know that he's still protecting us, so.
And the porks were injured in the, uh, making.
No, 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 they're all concrete, so. Um, also attended a, a presentation by District Attorney Todd Spitzer, uh, talking about, uh, fraud in the real estate market and how people can protect themselves, and, um, again, it's always just be aware, check all your statements, be aware of what's going on, and if you're not sure, speak up and ask a question, because there's many, many people who can help you, and, um, you know, the district attorney's office, the sheriff's department, um, if you have a question about something, they'll be able to lead you in the right direction. Enjoyed all the summer concerts this year. I'm sad that they're over, but they were a blast, so thank you to Parks and Recreation Department for providing such fun Fridays for thousands of people in Laguna Niguel. So we really appreciate, appreciate all your work. Thank you to all of the residents of Laguna Niguel who are so supportive of our adopted military units. So on the July twentieth, we had a Military Support Committee car wash for the, uh, sailors of the Stockdale, and then you can save up the dirt on your car, because we'll be having another one on September seventh, and the Marines will be in town to wash the cars. So thank you to our generous residents, um, because all the funds raised go directly to those units. And then, uh, you know, um, Councilman Menegar was talking about housing, a lot of our conversations center on housing, a lot of the talk with, um, over the past year or two has been about those that are at risk for becoming homeless. Well, what we're finding out as we talk to our, uh, nonprofit organizations is that the growing number of those who are becoming at risk for being homeless are senior citizens. So this Friday at the Orange County Senior Citizens Advisory Council, we're going to have Cesar Cavarnas, who is from the Kennedy Commission, and he's going to be giving a presentation on seniors and affordable housing. This is open to the public, so if anyone would like to attend, you are more than welcome to. This will be in San Juan Capistrano, starting at, uh, nine-thirty. We do have it on our event calendar, and the flyer is on our city website, or else, send me an email and I'll send you the, the flyer, but, uh, it is open to the public. So I urge anyone who works with seniors, who works in housing, who wants to know more about affordable housing and, and what we're talking about, come to the meeting to get some information. Also, our Chief of Police Services, Matt McDaniel, will be there, um, to highlight and introduce the Take Me Home program, and that's this Friday. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I, uh, will now turn to Mayor Pro Tim Davies.
Did you want to talk about wetlands?
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, got a diatribe about wetlands, I was going to go off and go, so.
Just wanted to make sure you're okay there.
Nothing but love for the wetlands.
Lot of, lot of, um, events that we've attended, National Night Out, great job as always, um, please thank everyone for doing that. It's fu- it's fun to watch the kids, they just, they just love that from the fire engine to the, the motorcycle, so great job. Concerts, great job as well, and they've been so much fun, everyone really enjoyed them, and they're not over, because we have our carnival coming, so I'm excited about that. I just want to touch real quickly, um, with Councilmember Reins, uh, about the split role coming up. Um, that is something very important, because of that being, um, touching property taxes when it comes to commercial properties, once they get their, their foot in the door, then it's going to be Prop thirteen, and it's already been said that that's basically where the rest of the funding is going to have to come from, since we're taxed everywhere else there is. So I am working with the ACCLC and trying to put on, um, something with Carolyn Kavetschi in regards to OC tax, not only on that, but also with housing, and I think RENA, perhaps we could even combine something like that, which would be really great, um, because again, I was just talking to someone regards to the RENA, um, numbers, and I for- forget what city it was, but basically, they were right now, I think, needing like two-hundred-and-fifty, say, um, and they were going up to seven-hundred. So, I mean, it's not just like five percent or ten percent, it's going to be to the point where you're like, we don't have that here, especially if you're, um, already developed out, so I think that's important that we get ahead of this and we get, um, our residents educated on this, because the, uh, split tax will be on the, um, ballot in twenty-twenty, uh, and the more education we can give them, the better decisions they can make. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I, uh, I'm a little bit foggy tonight, I must confess. I, uh, I've just returned last evening after ten days of being in China for, uh, a political delegation that was, uh, they go some years, some of my colleagues have been, uh, they apparently rested up after they got back, so I'm, there's hope left that I will be able to. Uh, it was a, it was a fantastic trip, uh, extraordinarily eye-opening, uh, about our bilateral relationship with that country. We traveled with one member of Congress, four state assembly members, and six mayors, plus three or four business people. It was the largest contingency ever taken for that. It was the first ever for several of the provinces that we attended, so we were having really first-of-its-kind meetings, uh, mayor-on-mayor meetings. Uh, I am the mayor of a city with sixty-seven thousand people, and I was meeting with the mayor of a city that had thirty-eight million people, uh, and it was one of several cities that had, you know, twenty-five-plus million residents, uh, and these are just mid-sized cities, uh, so it was, it was shocking, it was overwhelming, uh, and staggering the numbers that we're dealing with over there, but I can tell you with certainty that China is a country that is in great need of a partnership with the United States, uh, they value it, uh, they look forward to it, they're asking for it, and they want it to be as robust as we can possibly make it, and I can tell you with also certainty that they are working extraordinarily difficult, in extraordinarily, uh, creative ways to try to deal with the difficult process of raising their people out of poverty, and they, they, with one-point-four billion people, they use expressions like raising eight to nine-hundred million people literally out of poverty. Uh, their s- social system has a way of doing that, which we probably wouldn't necessarily adopt, but the task that they're charged with is overwhelming, so, and the one thing that I did say, uh, time and again, was I can't imagine us having to endure the same process, where they build more than five thousand forty-story-plus structures in the matter of just ten years. One city, Chongqing, which is the largest, uh, now in the world, it just, they think it surpassed Tokyo by size, uh, they've built five independent subway systems in the last two years, and they've got five more coming on in two more years. So when you think about development processes and what high-density looks like, I can give you photographs of exactly where it is and what it looks like, but, um, having said that, it, it was important, I look forward to sitting, I told Congress Rudus, uh, staff assistant tonight at the, uh, at the National Night Out, that I want to sit down with the congressman and debrief him on what we learned, uh, so that he has the benefit of that, and I certainly want to sit down with the assembly members that went with us as well, so we're going to do a follow-up takeaway on that in a couple of weeks, and I think that's important. Um, completely different note, uh, I wanted to talk just a second about the city center meeting that we had at the community hall, uh, across the ru- across the hallway here the other night. The overwhelming comment that I keep getting is that, gee, we wish the citizens would have an opportunity to comment, and gee, we wish there would have been a chance for that, and I'm telling you that you will have that chance. That meeting was not my meeting, it wasn't our meeting, I was invited to close it by saying thank you, but that was a developers' meeting, and what they wanted to do was to roll out a process and let you see it and think about it, and to talk amongst yourselves, if you will, so that when the time comes to have the public input, you can have all the im- public inputs you want. This microphone's going to be made available to the public on a number of different varieties, and I want to hear it, because I'm very interested in what they have to say, and we keep hearing from the Friends of the Library talk about a process, and I've, I greatly value that. They, they don't have the details yet, so we're still talking in a little bit in the abstract, but, uh, once they have the details, it's important that they then chime in on the, the rest of the details, and we can, we can move on with a solid product that, uh, that really benefits everyone. There's, it's a limited amount of space, so there's some discussion to be had about what it looks like, but, uh, I was very impressed with what they, what they said. I think that there's a real future there, and I'm looking forward to working with them to have, uh, something that the public can be proud of for a very long time. So if you're one of those people who, who has the opinion that you didn't get a chance to speak, uh, your chance is coming, and I invite you to come participate and, and join us in that. Uh, we do have, uh, our signature event this year, the carnival is coming up on August sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. I'm sure Ron's going to give us a slightly larger report than the one I'm about to give, but I'm really excited about this. It's been a long time coming, the city has done just an extraordinary job of outreach. I don't know if you all are noticing, but each month of this year, we are breaking all prior records for social media, and that's happened month after month after month, so, yeah, the, the city's doing a fantastic job of getting this out, and I know that, I know where that lies, and city staff, and they've been doing a good job. There's all sorts of things coming, so please invite your, your neighbors, your friends, your relatives, anybody that's interested in doing that. I am reaching out to all of our neighboring cities and their mayors and their city councils to make sure they know that they're invited. I like this to be a regional event, and certainly the numbers are, will be helpful for us as well, just to let people, uh, come celebrate with us too. Um, I, sorry I had to miss the last concert this season, The Answer's always one of my favorites, uh, of the year, I was still out of town then, but, uh, I saw the pictures, I lamented a little bit more that I missed it, and, uh, it's always a great thing. We had a great year of, uh, of concerts, and I really appreciate it. I wanted to, uh, just close my comments by making sure that I mentioned the horrific impact of the three mass shootings that occurred since we met last. It's a little bit weird, I'm not going to lie to you, to be in a foreign country, especially China, and listening to this happening in my country back home, and seeing what the impact on the people over there are, because it doesn't just hit us, it hits the world, and it hits their newspapers, and they talk about it, and they're concerned about it as well. As an elected official, I cross my fingers and hope to God that that doesn't happen in my world, but I know that it's quite possible, because the mayors of El Paso and the other cities affected this week might have had a similar response in their last council meeting. So I only close by saying that, um, thoughts and prayers are not nearly enough, but you have them, uh, and that you have our effort as a society to try to do something about this, and, uh, and I, I'm certain that Laguna Niguel is committed to do that. So with that, uh, thank you very much. I will now go around the room. I will now go around the room and start with Chief McDaniel. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do want to thank you and the rest of City Council who made the effort to get out there tonight. I know you had a short window to make it in, but I appreciate you coming out and your, your continued support of that event. It was a really good turnout. I thank the community for coming out. Tons of great young families out there getting to know us a little better, so it really was a great event. And then, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Bob Hall. This is his last meeting, so I want to thank him for his experience and just got me through a couple of issues, and, and really his calm demeanor was fantastic, and I'm going to miss him. But just a pleasure working with you, Bob. Thank you. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you very much. City Attorney Ines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to echo those comments. I want to congratulate and thank Bob Hall for his service and the great working relationship that he had with many of the staff, including me. And so, job well done. Thank you, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Great. Thank you, sir. Fire Authority, you didn't have a seat at the table up here. I got a chair for you right here, you know.
I'm the substitute. I'm good, though.
That's good to be the substitute teacher. That's right. Is there anything else you wanted to report? Anything?
Nothing that I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Debbie Bell.
Two items for the council tonight. One is, in addition to the public ride-away surveys that will be starting this week, we're also going to open the public input period for our self-evaluation and transition plan. The public input period is August 15th to September 30th. So, we will have surveys on our website, available on hard copy at Sea Country here at City Hall. It'll be, there'll be an ad in the newspaper, so try and get all the input that we can from the public that's interested. And then, secondly, I've been receiving a number of phone calls about coyotes. Had the opportunity to speak to the Animal Services Manager tonight at National Night Out, and she did tell me that it's very helpful to them that if you or your neighbors or other residents who are your friends contact you about a coyote sighting, that you encourage them to go ahead and call Animal Control. It's very helpful to them to know when and where coyotes are sighted. They do keep track of all of that information, and when they get a number of phone calls for the same location, they will go out and try and encourage the coyote to move on through painless, bloodless, but irritating methods, is what I'm told. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume that those people work for the Acme Corporation. Is that right? I ran into four, I live on one of... That's right. Dynamite and Anvols, I think is the... I live on one of the busiest corners in town, and I, I walked out my two Golden Retrievers at 10 o'clock at night and ran right into four of them. I mean, literally right underneath my house, so I, I promise you, they're all over the place, and they are brazen because there were cars zooming around everywhere. But coyote don't care. So, and by the way, I want to thank everybody sitting in the front. We had a little bit of a shuffle change last time. We moved people a little bit out of the corners and around front so we can see them. That was, as a result of my immense embarrassment by failing to call on our Deputy City Manager and our Public Works Director just because I didn't see them over here. So, I think this is working better. Everybody okay with the new layout? So, it's nice to see you guys face to face. So, I'll move on. Finance Director Erlison.
It was great working with you, Bob, and you have a great, well-deserved vacation. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Director Aduna.
I'd just like to pile on in thanking Bob for his term as our interim city manager. It's been great, and all the best.
Senior Painter List, you got a seat at the table. You, anything you want to share? Microphone has a privilege, so...
Just want to say thanks to Bob and good luck.
Thanks. City Clerk Gummis.
Yes, I also wanted to thank Bob. I feel really privileged that we were led by a hero, and I just think you're an awesome person, you and your wife. And even though I never met her, I just think she's awesome. Because she's a hero, just like you.
We have no proof that she exists.
I've met his wife. She's a great lady.
I did see a picture of her, so I know she exists. But anyway, thank you so much for all you did. Thank you for assisting with the recruitment, bringing us someone that you know is going to be an awesome fit for us, and we're all really looking forward to her being part of our team. But we will miss you. I will miss you, too. So, thank you.
Recreation Manager Rivera, pinch hitting tonight.
Yes. Hello, City Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. First, I want to say all of our summer camps are ending, our summer concerts are ending, our, our pool programs are ending. It's been a very successful summer with the changes of the roads and the YMCA access and things like that. We've worked very hard to make it accessible for people. People are enjoying the changes and really excited for the new building. Obviously, August 16th, 17th, 18th, we have a carnival, and I'm really hoping every time you open social media, you're seeing a, a commercial for it or advertisement for it. So, we're hoping that plan's working, and we're getting a lot of great feedback. We have around 50 community booths signed up for this event, which is super exciting. Carnival rides, games, surprises, our largest package ever of entertainment, staging, and lighting, so it's going to be a true celebration, saluting the history, the present, and the future of Laguna Niguel. And the Parks and Recreation Staff is super excited for the opportunity, but it's important that we also recognize that every department head in this room has been a source of excitement and a source of staffing, a source of helping us with this event. So, it's definitely a team effort. It's going to celebrate Laguna Niguel. It's a larger than life, and we're excited to be a part of it. Next week, we'll send you guys parking information, links to more information. So, a lot more information coming, a lot more work left to do, but we're super excited about it. Obviously, during the course of the summer, we've been very busy. Traffic and parking in the YMCA area and our parking lots have been very obstructed. We've been working very well hand-in-hand with YMCA. I meet with them every other week to talk about obstacles, accesses, and things like that. And over the course of coming weeks, we will have additional access issues, which our Director Jackie Scott will talk about in a few minutes. But I do want to let you know that the YMCA and the Laguna Niguel Parks Recreation Department are working to make that a smooth transition as we move forward and equitable, because it's going to be worth the extra effort for the great prize we're going to have. Staff is currently rallying the next couple of weeks to start working on programming the new building. We have lots of great ideas, we're getting some great ideas from our residents, so we're super excited to program that building and be moving forward in the next direction. And our department would also like to thank Bob Hall for your leadership. We're all better staff members because you've been here, and we do appreciate your leadership. And we're going to miss not learning from you anymore, but always come back and visit. Thank you so much for your, your time here.
Director Scott.
Thank you very much for that, Ron. As he sort of alluded to, there's a few more disruptions to come in the Crown Valley Community Park construction that is ongoing. And as part of this building project, the internal park access road running to the YMCA building does require temporary short-term shutdown. This is required to allow installation of utilities, an underground stormwater retention basin, and total reconstruction of the roadway elevations to meet the finished grade at the new park improvements. So, over the past few months, city staff's been working with the Construction Management Team, CW Driver, to explore alternatives to minimize or eliminate a temporary closure. At this point, it's been determined that in order to complete the project, a temporary short-term closure of the access road is unavoidable. The city wishes to minimize impacts to the YMCA and is offering coordination and support to assist the YMCA to maintain their ongoing operations. The city staff will continue to work with the YMCA to come up with solutions to address any operational impacts that may come up. The first day of the road closure is September 3rd. It is going to last approximately 25 working days, and it's expected to be opened back up by October 7th. I understand, and we understand as the staff here, that this, this is an inconvenience from this closure. The closure is necessary to ensure the safety of the construction workers and the public accessing the YMCA during the completion of these key elements in the project. During the time of the internal park access road closure, persons seeking to visit and use the YMCA will be able to park their vehicles in a number of designated parking lots within the adjacent and around, within the park and adjacent to the park. And once parked, they'll be able to walk via the pedestrian trail or ride an ADA-accessible shuttle if they are unable to walk. I want to extend appreciation to the YMCA and the community for cooperation and patience during this stage of the project. I want to thank Bob for helping me break the news to the YMCA and conduct some coordination meetings to help us along in getting to this point. More information will be posted on the city's website. YMCA is also going to be engaging in extensive outreach program with the residents and clients of, of their building that come to that, to that facility. We're working hand-in-hand to help them reprogram where possible and continue the access that they need.
That's great. I also want to thank the YMCA. I mean, I realize that's an inconvenience. At the end of those 25 days, we, we will be delivering them a neighbor, which will be second to none, and I think that's going to be a great partnership for a long time. So, I'm sorry that there's a brief interruption, but we'll get that handled in the most professional ways you guys always do, and I appreciate you taking the laboring or in, in the uncomfortable conversation, so.
And, and we're also making sure that as we go through the closure, we look for every opportunity to be more efficient in getting it done and opening before that date.
And thank you for that as well. Mr. Swan Song. Interim City Manager, Bob Hall.
For the last time.
For the last time.
It's been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve alongside the team here, serve the City Council, the community members. I, I can't say enough good things about the management team that you have. They talked about how smooth things have gone and how calm and that sort of thing. It hasn't been without challenge. It's just the fact that we have, you know, you have a good, strong team and a team approach. If somebody has a conflict or something's wrong, somebody else is right there to pick up the ball. There's been a couple of those incidents that have happened, and the staff has not missed a beat, and that's because you have good, quality staff working here. I can't, I can tell you, I've worked in a few different cities, four cities, five cities now. I've never worked with a group of council members that have the level of respect for one another. And staff, the way that you guys do, the way that you communicate with us, is very, very respectful and credible, and it's, it makes you want to be part of an organization like that. So, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing that you do. It's clear that the citizens of Laguna Niguel have elected the right people to represent them, and it's been my honor to participate in what's going on here. I was thinking about it when the, when the Girl Scouts were out this morning, or a little while ago. That's the best example I can think of, what I, what I'll take away from here in Laguna Niguel is that picture of those three young ladies there. It's just an incredible community. So, again, it's been my honor, my privilege, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Bob. I, I did not, I did not, not mention you on purpose. I, I wanted to save it to the end to tell you that, you know, life brings you some interesting stuff. I mean, I, I did not know Bob Hall before he came to Laguna Niguel. We interviewed him as the City Council while I'm sure he was in shorts and a T-shirt on a boat somewhere off the Florida Keys. So, not exactly the hiring process that one would envision, but we had trust in Christine's recommendation of you, and, and wow, did you more than deliver on that. I, I have this feeling that your time at Laguna Niguel will be remembered. It's been memorable for a lot of great and unfortunate reasons, some families, you know, issues, and then all the great things that have happened here. But as a, you know, as a, a, a City Council Member, especially in the year that I, I serve as the mayor, it's important to have continuity. And brother, you bring that in droves, so it's, it's, it's very, very comfortable to have you here. You've done a fantastic job. All I hear from staff is great, and anytime they hear about transition, worry percolates up, and then, and then that worry turned into happiness and pleasure and the smoothness, and I, I got nothing but fantastic comments on that. I just wanted to say thank you. And I, I'm envious. Retirement sounds pretty good, and I, I think that it's well-deserved by you, and whatever you end up doing next, you know, please let us be a part, and please know you'll have a favorable recommendation from this council, I'm sure. Before you left, I wanted to say thanks in a more public way, so if I could invite my colleagues to join me in the well, I have something for you. Oh, yeah. Definitely got your picture. I've already given you a challenge coin, so you don't get another one, so. So, as, as is our custom in town, we just wanted to say thank you. And hopefully you can place this Laguna Niguel plaque on your wall and remember your time favorably here, and so we say thank you. This is a bottle of Four Roses whiskey. As you stare at your plaque, I recommend that you try some of that and see how it goes, so...
What can you see in the...
That's right. It gets better. The plaque gets more interesting the more, the further you go, so just, just keep looking.
Just wait till you look at the coins.
That's right. But on behalf of all of us, thank you again, man, and I, I really appreciate it, and, and job well done. So, thank you very much.
I think I can speak for all of us again. We've gone through a couple of city managers, and the transition, there really wasn't a transition. It was just amazing how smooth that you made this, and we're very blessed to have had you this time, and we're grateful for you actually coming, you know, kind of to our rescue at this point, but you've also become a good friend as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciated your professionalism, your seamless way that you came in and did what you did, and I'm envious you're leaving for Hawaii tomorrow, so have fun.
Can we go?
Well, I want to repeat the same thing. Thank you very much, Bob. You did a great job, and you made the transition so smooth that we don't feel that, you know,